All right, we're ready.
All right.
Great, are we on? Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming. I will call to order the April ninth, two thousand and twenty four Planning Commission, and I will begin by reading this. The opportunities for the public to assess and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. With that, I'd like to ask for the role to establish a quorum.
Okay. Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Claiborne.
Present.
Mr. Missel.
Present.
Mr. Carazana.
Present.
Mr. Bivins.
Present.
Awesome, and we have received a request for Commissioner Firehawk to join us remotely. Is Commissioner Firehawk on the line?
He is.
Great.
One second, there she is.
Good evening, Commissioner Firehawk, good to see you.
Hello.
Could you please state your general location and why you're requesting to be remote?
I am located in Howardsville, Virginia, and I'm asking to be remote due to an acute case of bronchitis.
Awesome, sorry to hear that, thank you for joining us anyway. Do I have a motion to invite Commissioner Firehawk into the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, I have the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the regular agenda, and I will begin with matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there any matters from the public not listed on tonight's agenda for public input, including the consent agenda? I had understood there might be one, but great. All right, we have one that has signed up to speak, under the name of Janie Holbrook. Please state your name and your general location of residence for the record.
Good evening, Janie Holbrook. Janie Holbrook Whitehall.
Thank you, just as a heads up, you'll have three minutes to speak, and after two minutes are gone, you'll have one minute left.
Thank you.
With the yellow light.
What happens when circumstances change so significantly that the assumptions underlying a master plan are no longer valid? What happens when the transportation study that supported the master plan is rendered obsolete? When I asked this at the all ACC meeting last fall, the answer was that those issues would be considered during a rezoning process. So what is the critical change in East Croze? The demise of the Eastern Avenue connector from two fifty to three notched. The southern segment to two fifty was the number one catalyst project in the two thousand and twenty one Croze master plan, and together with the connector north to three notched, a foundational assumption in the two thousand and twenty one Croze transportation study. All of the intersection traffic analysis, all of the trip generation numbers that rely on that transportation study are based on construction of the full connector, and so is land use. Last year, the VDOT estimate for the connector to two fifty skyrocketed from twenty four point seven million to thirty nine point five. County staff had confirmed that that increase is due primarily to inflation, not just contingencies. County transportation planning staff do not consider the project competitive for smart scale. VDOT will not proceed without full funding, and the county has never funded a transportation project like that. In two thousand and sixteen, it wasn't funded at just twelve point nine million. It isn't going to happen. So the Eastern Avenue connector has been in the master plan for over forty years, and now it's time to acknowledge that the county simply cannot build it. The northern segment was actually deleted from the future street network map in the latest Croze master plan, and it is now clear that the southern segment also is just dead. The only thing worse than not fulfilling the connector process promise is avoiding the hard truth and adding insult to injury by upzoning to the high end of the density ranges in East Croze, particularly the upcoming Oak Bluff. The Park Road and High Street neighborhoods dating to the middle of the last century don't have shoulders on the roads or sidewalks or bike lanes, but they have absorbed much of the East Croze development traffic and will never see relief. The intersection of Park Ridge and Three Notched was expected to become a level of service F even with Eastern Avenue, and now it will happen even faster. The eastern connector simply is not feasible or affordable, so please, when Oak Bluff comes up, factor in the fundamental change in transportation and safety in East Croze. That's not a moratorium, it's project specific, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much for your input. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak to matters not on the agenda? All right, thank you, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who'd like to pull any of the items, specifically one item, I believe, from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Carolyn, the vote, please.
Hey. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Firehawk, sorry, Ms. Firehawk.
Yes, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two items now that are requesting deferral to a new date, and I'd like to ask motions for each of those two to request or to accept the request for deferral. Let's start with AFD two thousand and twenty three dash one Ivy Creek District Review. Do I hear a motion to defer?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And is that motion to defer to the date specific of June eleventh listed in the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Sorry, that was your call, thanks. And we have a second, I think?
Yes, second.
Could we have the role, please?
Okay. Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now we also need a motion to accept deferral of AFD two thousand and twenty four dash two, our hardware district review.
So moved.
And to be specific is?
Up. Go ahead.
That's right, just request deferral to?
Yeah, move to request deferral of that reference project to June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you, we have a motion, I believe.
Okay. Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, we are rolling. All right, we will move now into the public hearing items, and we'll begin with ZMA two thousand and twenty three dash twelve, Holly Hills, and I'll ask staff for the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Andy Rattlebach, and I am a senior planner with the Albemarle County Planning Division. Tonight, we are here for a public hearing regarding a rezoning application, ZMA two thousand and twenty three twelve, known as Holly Hills. To provide some context for the location of the site of this rezoning request, the following aerial map shows the eight parcels highlighted that are included in this request. They are located on the east side of Route twenty nine, south of Hollymead Drive, and then the RST rezoning, now known as Archer North, is directly to the south southwest. And the neighborhoods to the northeast, east, and southeast of the property are the Hollymead and Forest Lakes communities. As I mentioned, there are eight parcels in this rezoning, and all eight are currently zoned R one. They, by right, the property owners could develop thirty residential units on this property at this time because the eight parcels together total just over thirty acres in size. The overlay zoning districts that apply to these eight parcels include the AIA Airport Impact Area, the EC Entrance Corridor, Route twenty nine is an entrance corridor, and there are steep slopes on this property, both managed and preserved. Surrounding zoning districts include PUD Planned Unit Development, which is Hollymead and Forest Lakes surrounding from the northeast and over around to the southeast. The RST rezoning, which I mentioned is now called Archer North, is zoned PRD Planned Residential Development. And then the properties to the west across Route twenty nine are zoned RA Rural Areas. Looking at the comprehensive plan for this site, these eight properties are in the Places twenty nine master plan, and they, there's a mixed designation for these eight parcels of urban density residential, which is the orange color on the map, and private open space and environmental features, which is the green color on the map. Urban density residential recommends a range of six point zero one to thirty four units per acre, along with secondary uses such as retail office and commercial that support the neighborhood. For residential building height, there is a recommended maximum height of forty five feet or four stories. And the private open space designation calls for privately owned recreational amenities in open space areas to help protect environmental features such as floodplains, steep slopes, and wetlands. Surrounding land use designations include commercial mixed use in Hollymead to the north, right, along Route twenty nine. Hollymead and Forest Lakes are largely designated Neighborhood Density Residential, which is the yellow color. RST Archer North is also designated Urban Density Residential, and to the southwest, there are some areas designated Rural Areas across Route twenty nine. So looking at the proposal for this application, as I mentioned, there are eight parcels that total approximately thirty point eight two one acres that are all currently zoned R one. The existing use is mostly forested with a few single family detached houses and accessory structures located on the property. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to PRD Planned Residential Development to allow for a maximum of four hundred and ten dwelling units. These dwelling units would be a mixture of multifamily and single family attached units. And at four hundred and ten units, the property would come out to a gross density of thirteen point three dwelling units per acre and a net density of approximately twenty dwelling units per acre. And both of these density calculations are within the range recommended by the Places twenty nine master plan for urban density residential. This screenshot shows the part of the application plan for the development, showing the building envelopes, the general street network, and several of the amenity spaces and features. And this, of course, was also included as attachments for in the staff report. So looking more at the specifics of this proposal based on the application plan shown in the previous slide, as I mentioned, there are four hundred and ten units proposed across seven different designated building envelopes. It would be a mix of multifamily and single family attached units, and the maximum height would be four stories as recommended by the Places twenty nine master plan. It is largely a public street network with the main road, Archer Avenue, connecting from US twenty nine. It would kind of go east and then south through this development, connecting to the RST Archer North Development to the south, and then ultimately to Ashwood Boulevard, where we'd then connect with Archer Avenue across Ashwood Boulevard, going through the Brookhill neighborhood, all the way down to Polo Grounds Road. As I mentioned, it is largely a public street network, but the travel ways and access ways through the multifamily units would be privately owned and maintained as a part of those multifamily buildings. There are the two main access points for this development. There would be a right in, right out entrance off of Route twenty nine, and then, as I mentioned, the entrance from the continuation of Archer Avenue that would connect to the south, ultimately to Ashwood Boulevard. Two emergency access only points are recommended. This is Rubin Lane, which is to the northwest of the property, near its intersection with Hollymead, South Hollymead Drive and Route twenty nine, and then another emergency access point with Derby Lane, which is a cul-de-sac in the Hollymead subdivision, and this is in the northeastern portion of the property. There are proposed three future interparcial connections, and these interparcial connections are for the three parcels to the middle north of this project that are not a part of this proposal and are surrounded by this property to the west, south, and east, and to the Hollymead subdivision to the north. The applicant is proposing a shared use path along Archer Avenue. This would connect with a shared use path that is also proposed along Archer Avenue in the Archer North RST development, and the shared use path would also connect with a shared use path that is currently along the east side of Route twenty nine. The applicant is proposing a Class B primitive trailway through the forested areas in this development along the stream that goes through the middle of this proposal. The applicant is proposing fifteen percent affordable housing at eighty percent AMI, which is consistent with the county's affordable housing policy at the time that this application was submitted and reviewed. The applicant is proposing for some disturbance of the stream buffer and preserved steep slopes in this development to allow for the construction of public streets, especially Archer Avenue connecting Route twenty nine to the Archer North Development to the south, and for associated utilities along those public streets as well. And then overall, a PRD requires a minimum of twenty five percent open space, and this project is proposing approximately forty point five percent of the site being open space. This would include a one hundred foot forested buffer along US Route twenty nine, which I mentioned is an entrance corridor, and the one hundred foot buffer is recommended in the Places twenty nine master plan for this entrance corridor area. Along the north and east property boundaries of the site adjacent to the existing Forest Lakes and Hollymead neighborhoods, there is a proposed buffer of thirty feet in width. This would be a mixture of undisturbed buffer and landscaped buffer. There are three main amenity spaces situated throughout this site, which would include the recreational facilities for this development, including a proposed clubhouse and pool and tot lots, and then the forested areas along the WPO's stream buffer and preserved steep slopes. These areas would largely remain forested, except for, as I mentioned, those portions that are proposed to be disturbed for the public street construction. And in these forested areas, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing a Class B primitive trail to allow for recreation in those areas. This slide shows an illustrative exhibit that was provided with the application depicting how the development could be developed based on the application plan. As you can see, the multifamily buildings are largely in the center and west portion of the development along Route twenty nine and Archer Avenue, and then the townhouses, single family attached units are in the bottom right and the top right, closest to RST Forest Lakes and Hollymead. Schools, this is one of the major impacts of this development is that with four hundred and ten multifamily units, it is expected that there could be as many as one hundred forty eight additional students generated by this development. These students would go to Agner Heard Elementary School, Lakeside Middle School, and Albemarle High School. Agner Heard Elementary is currently under capacity but would become overcapacity with this proposed development. Lakeside Middle is currently under capacity and would remain under capacity with this proposed development. And then Albemarle High School is overcapacity and would, of course, remain overcapacity with more students provided by this development. So there are several positive aspects from this rezoning request. The request is consistent with the uses of urban density residential and density of between six point zero one and thirty four units that are recommended by the Places twenty nine master plan. The request is consistent or mostly consistent with the applicable neighborhood model principles, and the request does provide affordable units at fifteen percent of the total number of units constructed, which, as I mentioned, is consistent with the county policy at the time this application was submitted and reviewed. Concerns, there are a couple concerns in this development. One, as I mentioned, it would result in additional student enrollment at area schools that are already overcapacity, like Albemarle High School, or would cause a school like Agner Heard Elementary School to become overcapacity. And I'm sorry, it is not Agner Heard Elementary School, it is Hollymead Elementary School, and it is still undercapacity but would become overcapacity over time with this one. The numbers are correct, I just had the wrong school name, I apologize for that. And then the second concern is that the development would disturb areas of preserved steep slopes and WPO's stream buffer in order to construct some of the project's public streets. However, constructing these streets does help to connect the various developable areas of the property and provide more interconnections, helping to avoid additional cul-de-sacs in this area. Ultimately, staff does recommend approval of ZMA two thousand and twenty three dash twelve Holly Hills, and I am available for any questions that you may have either now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you, great report. So are there any questions for staff?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so one of the questions I have is there's an intermittent stream shown on the western side of the property. Has a, has a site determination been made to confirm that is indeed intermittent? If I were to go out there today, would I see water flowing through that stream?
I'm not aware if a, if it's been determined whether they are intermittent, but staff was, it was reviewed with largely a stream buffer along areas, but I'm not aware if it's been determined to be intermittent or not.
So no, no site visit has been done, yeah. So, okay, so then the other thing is, I seem to recall in the past, there was a policy about mitigation when, when a stream buffer was impacted, that there was something like a two to one ratio. What is the current mitigation policy for impacts to stream buffers?
Um, I would have to look into that, I'm not sure what the current policy is. Our engineering division, of course, would look at any impacts to stream buffers, and following the guidelines and regulations would require any mitigation that may be necessary. I do know that certain things like parking spaces or residential lots would not be permitted at all in the residential areas, or in the stream buffer areas, but I would have to follow up with our engineering division on what exactly the current mitigation policies are.
Thanks.
Thank you, any other questions? Mr. Bivins?
Good. Good evening. Can I ask you just a couple things? So it's good to know that RST is now called Archer North. Do we have any sense when that might actually go through site review? Because it's, if there's a second entrance there, do we have a sense that this project's actually going to happen so that a second entrance can actually be realized?
There is a site plan under review for Archer North.
Okay, thank you. And then on your, on, on your CAC report, which I think is exhibit number, I don't remember what that is, let me go, I think it's attachment nine. On there, in a response to a CAC question, it said that there was, there was, there was not any conflict with schools in the, and I assume that's a staff report. I don't know if that's a staff report, where there's a blurb, there's a, there's an italicized response to a question about, about schools. Because we're aware that both Hollymead and Lakeside schools are not currently at capacity, and the county is building another elementary school, actually, they're building two schools in the area, however, we are still overcrowded. These schools, however, we are still concerned that this development, along with all others proposed or being built, may overcrowd these schools before the new school is constructed, the two new schools I have said are constructed. This was not brought up at the meeting, and since schools are not currently at capacity, but yet in your notes, you tell us, someone tells us that they are at capacity, so the schools either are or aren't, and so I just, would you clarify for us, please?
Yeah, so Albemarle High School is currently overcapacity, and Hollymead and Lakeside are both currently undercapacity, but with this development, it would be expected that these students would push Hollymead to be overcapacity.
And at the same time, I think the public should know that there are two schools that are on the block, that are on the boards for that part of the county, in addition to high school, Center Two, which would add capacity at the Albemarle High School location. So while, just I want to say that there's absolutely some breathing room to accept students because of these projects, and both the elementary schools and the high schools, which are on, which are on the boards for this area. Can you? I know you said that this, this project came in before the county, before our supervisors updated the, the affordable, the affordable units requirements, or not requirements, but possibles, possibilities to be proffered. Would the, would the applicant have the ability, if they decided to do more than sixty two units, to do that, do so?
If the applicant were interested, they could certainly provide more affordable housing than is recommended in the current policy.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, any other questions?
One good clarification, following Mr. Murray's, Commissioner Murray's inquiry on the stream buffers, is the only impact to the stream buffers limited to the road, from the proposed development?
It would be road construction and any associated utilities. So as such things as if a water line had to go through or went along with the right-of-way.
Yeah, there's a couple locations that they're clearly crossing the streams, so, okay. But that is, there's no other development that's?
Correct, there would be no, none of the residential units or amenity facilities would be constructed in the stream buffer.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Thanks, and thank you for the report. I was wondering about the kind of the format of these reports on the bottom section of the front page, where it lists the positive aspects and the concerns. There's always a concern about additional student enrollment, and I was just wondering, we only do this for this age group? We don't list concerns for more elder care or more firefighters needed or anything like that, and so I'm just kind of like wondering if that always needs to be included as a negative factor, whereas I would just think of it as something we plan for. There's a question there somewhere, maybe.
I think that's definitely something that we could start considering when we, in the review of rezoning applications, and I know our fire, fire rescue department does look at new applications to determine, at least for their department, any impacts on being able to provide appropriate fire service.
Of course, of course, yeah, and I always see it listed in concerns, I'm like, is that a concern or just a need for planning? So, yeah, thank you for consideration.
Great, thank you, I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, this is a PUD, correct? Sorry, PRD?
PRD.
PRD, yep, thank you. Why a PRD versus an NMD? Did staff or the county give any feedback or direction to the applicant on that?
Since this development is nearly all residential, generally, those make more sense for us to do PRD because they're more residentially focused. The NMD is something that really is to promote a mix of uses within the development, and this applicant was not interested in doing commercial development as part of this. And also, since this, in the Places twenty nine master plan, it's largely designated for urban density residential, with residential being the primary use, that generally fits in better with the PRD than the more mixed use NMD.
Got it, thank you. Traffic generation, I think it was mentioned in here that VDOT's obviously reviewed the TIA, and the feedback was that it's only one of the turning movements, I guess, the stacking on one of the turning movements, that was an issue. And so that, I think, is based on the assumption that they can connect Archer through to now Archer, gosh, what was it, Archer South? Archer North, thank you. So getting back to what Commissioner Bivins was asking, I was also curious, you mentioned there's a site plan that's in the works for Archer North. Is that inclusive of the connection of the street? Or is that a separate internal site plan that doesn't yet trigger that interconnecting street?
That site plan has the Archer Avenue connection from Ashwood Boulevard up to the property boundary, and the applicant may be able to speak more on that, too, during their presentation.
Great, thank you, perfect segue, so with that, I'll open the public hearing. Yes, oh, sorry, Commissioner Firehawk? Any questions?
No, none at this time, thank you.
Thank you, okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Steve Blaine, here representing the applicants. We have a joint venture in this application, a very experienced multifamily developer, Dominion Realty Partners, and Michael Campbell, who's the CEO, is here tonight, and Stony, Stony Creek Development, Stony Point Development, Chris Henry is also here tonight. Chris Henry is also here tonight. We have our whole team. I know there are a couple of questions that I will defer to our engineer, and we want to get to Mr. Morris's and and everyone's questions tonight. So if I can start the slideshow. The application plan is in your packet. As you might guess, this has evolved quite a bit since its inception. We started last summer before we filed the application, met with leadership of both the Hollymead and the Forest Lakes neighbors and got some good feedback. And what you're what's before you tonight is response to the concerns, as you might guess, traffic was a concern. And in particular, traffic in neighborhood streets. So the response, we had potential for inter parcel, inter community connections, both at Derby Lane and Rubin Lane, but the the team pledged to the neighborhoods that we would maintain those as emergency access only. The other concerns you might also expect were impacts to the immediate neighbors. So this plan reflects a twenty foot undisturbed buffer, which will be common area. And then a ten foot landscape buffer. It's really, it's really more enhanced than that because the setbacks, as you know, from if you've looked at the application plan, so you have a twenty foot building setback, so you really have forty feet. So that was mostly what we took out of our meetings with the with the community. Some other interest in inner parcel, inner mobile connection, multimodal connections. This slide shows the project in kind of a overall context. You see the north at the top of the slide is the Holly Hills development. And then below Archer Avenue, right, north of Archer Avenue is the what what's called the Archer North Development. And then, of course, Brook Hill, which is to the south. So this you can see reveals existing multi-use paths along twenty nine, also along Polo Grounds Road. The wish I had a pointer, the the red is the future Archer Avenue, and it will also have a ten foot multi-use path along. This shows a conceptual image of the buildings, and as Andy pointed out, the the higher density apartment buildings are located central to the project and along twenty nine with the sort of lower density townhouse and two over two type product more adjacent to the conventional neighborhoods. Similar image showing the conceptual plan, but with we've got you can see the proximity to Hollymead Elementary School and some real opportunities to enhance the trail network. The light blue is an existing trailway in Forest Lakes. So there's a it's very close to the border of our project, and there's an opportunity to connect with that. The red hash line is a proposed trail that would provide really kind of got the idea of the notion of students walking to school. The neighborhood expressed concerns initially about, well, Derby 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 Lane, you know, doesn't have sidewalks, and is it really appropriate for students to be walking in the street to to school? And from the community meeting back in January, the team agreed that we would work with both Forest Lakes and Hollymead to develop a trail system that might address that. And this is sort of a detail of that. That is the northeast corner of the project. And you can see the the hash sort of line would be the the path of the trail, which would link up with Hollymead Drive. And we would put up obviously a crosswalk to get students over to the existing. I think it's a ten foot multi-use path. Get them to school. And you see some examples of the the type of trail we have in mind. The the bridge is from a path connecting Forest Lakes to Baker Butler Elementary. And, you know, we would envision a very sensitive trail that would have minimal disturbance. We want to unpack the comments about the school. We did an analysis based on what we really project for the for the project in terms of the mix of uses. This shows the projected capacity numbers. This comes right from the Albemarle County School Division, and you see it's Hollymead. And Andy slide slide, your slide was correct. It did have the correct name on it. It's Hollymead Elementary, shows a capacity of four twenty nine. And really, in the next ten years, schools, they don't see it reaching anywhere near that. In fact, that's been the pattern at Hollymead. I looked at that back in twenty fifteen when we worked on the Brook Hill project. Same thing, ten year projection. Actual numbers never reached it. Lakeside, even the staff. The school division's comment acknowledges that with the addition of this project, Lakeside would not be over capacity. I think we've known for some time Albemarle has been over capacity, but this is what the school division actually projects. And this was our analysis using the multipliers that they in the schools use for depending on what type of unit is. So for elementary, and the big swing is that when it's heavily weighted for multifamily, you see the multiplier is only point one two per unit. So if you contrast that with the analysis that was in the staff report, if you use an average, you come up with a almost a double multiplier, and that results in their projections of eighty six students. Now, we don't fault the schools division for this approach because we didn't commit to the types of the numbers of types of units. So, you know, in fairness, they used an average and based it on a an average multiplier. I think what we would like to take away is that the school division, they have a strategy. They're not you know, they know that there's growth in this area. In terms of we we project that Hollymead would continue to be at under capacity, but even even if it reach reaches capacity, and that's why the school, that's why there's a North feeder school in the CIP. And they've recognized this since their long range planning advisory report five years ago. Lakeside continue to operate it at under capacity. A similar but a different strategy when it comes to the high school. The approach is, I think, pretty novel in that they've developed this center approach. Center one, I think, has already been funded. Center two is maybe not funded, but is projected. And with those two additions to the system, they'll accommodate six hundred and fifty students. So our takeaway is that it's the school division saying, I see you've got a minute left. Hey, we we recognize this is an example, the growth that we know is coming. And supervisors and, you know, source of CIP money, be aware of it, but we don't see it as a as a negative or unfavorable for this project. We have a special exception in for setbacks or step backs. We realize you don't take action on that, but we thought you might want to see some images along Route twenty nine, in particular, some massing. This is, let's see, this would be going southbound near the entrance, look looking east. Similar image. This would be going northbound, looking east as well. Just to give you kind of a concept of the massing. And then finally, want to point out, it's been this developer's very successful approach to green building by, if I can conclude, or if you'd like.
Please do.
Thirty minutes, thirty seconds. And the National Green Building Standard is a standard that's sort of key to residential LEED. We've got all kinds of styles of building with LEED certification, but this one uses these six areas of focus, and unlike LEED and Energy Star and some of these other there's a there's a real focus on the lot and land development aspect to achieve a certification. So with that, we'll gladly try and answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Bivens.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions, if I might. So I noticed that we noticed that we got we were informed that there's about forty percent, let's say, on so green space on the project. And and we also noticed that there's a great deal of topography change on that on that site. That's an interesting site. It's actually been looking at the site for a long time, not personally, but just sort of driving up down twenty nine and noticing, yeah, there's somebody should go put something over there. And so I'm glad somebody's going to come and put something over there. But my question is, once you, once you build it out, will there in fact be where the will the community be able to use a good part of that? Not the part that's down by the stream, but the part that's above sort of twenty nine north. Will that be accessible to them, or is it just going to be steep slopes?
Well, I think it's part of the reason for the primitive trail system is that they, you know, we want to have passive use of it. And where the where the trail can be accommodated, you don't want to intrude on any of the natural features. But, yeah, that would be accessible in that way.
Okay, then I have just two other questions, Chair. Everyone has known that while you have some good places for recreation that are sort of tailored out. And I would just ask you, as you look at those things in quotes called top lots, that you think about them being intergenerational places? That families and single people and people with children can in fact come together and that just not be a segregated place for for the the putative top lot. Particularly since your numbers for what you're going to be pushing to schools, I would say you might not you might not need a top lot per se, but you could use some space that the community could use and not the pool, not the pool area, not the clubhouse, that just people could be outside. That would be helpful, but and even though I know that I'm probably not supposed to ask this question, there's two other questions. If you if you think about the sixty two, is there a point in the project where you might be able to look at your balance sheets and say, actually, we can increase the number of affordable units here? Or we just wet it to sixty two at this particular point, and sixty two it shall be?
Well, there's no owner or investor who's restricted by the policy of the county. So that's always something that a developer or owner can examine on market conditions.
As you come through the process. Okay, well, just keep an open mind. I think that would be very helpful going forward. And then I see you have bike racks. You also are going to have EV chargers on the property? EV chargers on the property?
Yes.
So they will be there? Okay, fine, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Garzana?
Thank you. Can you go to the to your illustrative where you're showing the building mass? Yeah, that that was.
Street or from the street or from the above?
The massing? No, sorry, your site plan. Or your theoretical site plan. Yeah. The one you had before, where the building, the building footprints.
Got one there, Paul.
Yeah, that was good. So you're asking for an exception for the the step back. Is that just in general for all the buildings, or are there specific buildings that you're
it's really
point targeting?
Excellent question. It's really just the two buildings that are along the entrance corridor on twenty nine. And in fact, the orientation of those buildings are a result of an ARB preference. They were concerned about two buildings aligned, parallel, and a long wall concept. So this was our response, which was well received. To make one building perpendicular, yeah.
And just a follow up to Mr. Bivens' comment on amenities. So right now, I think you have one area where I where it's mainly that the grassy area, it's a called the ST amenities, right in the middle is a triangle. Is that predominantly so? So can is there enough room there for any kind of activity, any kind of sports activity, or soccer fields, or is there any kind of potential for an active recreation area?
I'll ask the the developer what their experience is, but we wouldn't preclude those activities. We also would note that the amenities would include a pool and and clubhouse.
Is that I thought the pool was up? I'm talking about the triangle area that's more towards the middle.
Oh, the right, center of the property.
Yes.
I don't know if that was supportive soccer pitch, but we do have
I'll just put out there that some kind of activity. I mean, you're four hundred, you're talking about
Sure.
dozens of children. It's the opportunity for for some kind of activity, the sports, whether it's basketball courts, soccer field, something that they can. I mean, I know that the Todd lots and the dog parks and all those will be tend tend to get, but probably not what kids are looking for.
Right.
Agreed. So agreed. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Clever.
Sure. Thank you for the the presentations. I have a couple of questions and a comment. I wanted to go back to the the V dot piece that I saw in the staff report that said they had concerns about the, I guess, it's probably stacking in the existing turn lane. And then I saw where this project proposes to put an additional turn lane. Does that reconcile the V dot concerns?
Yes, and that's a late breaking. I I think staff probably received a memo yesterday or today. Right up until the last few days, we were in conversations, and I'll ask Carl Holden to come up and elaborate on this. He's our traffic engineer. We seem to have allayed the concerns that V dot had. And their recommendation is that there are no improvements that are warranted by this development.
Okay. All right, that's very helpful. And then on the affordable housing units, is the plan to disperse those throughout the project? In other words, not have like building seven be affordable housing, right?
Like that's correct. There will not be a designated affordable area as units become available for rent. And if there's a qualified tenant, then they will be leased. And there won't be any difference in the in the finishes among the units.
Yeah. And then I'll also make a couple of comments. I'm very grateful for the presentation that you had around the schools. I would just say for me, with this kind of impact, I would have loved this scene something to try to offset it, even if the schools are under capacity, is there's still just ongoing maintenance that has to happen. And I know it's tough for schools to get money, both at the state and local level. So that's just one comment. And the second one is as we're continuing to develop the site plan here, just give us some additional thought to the the green grassy areas that you've heard. But I look at them in a sea of asphalt, and I think of kids having to always cross the street and vehicles everywhere. So just give us a thought on vehicular and pedestrian, how that starts to play with each other. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Murray.
Yes, so the the headwaters of streams play a critical role in stream ecology. Their county policy currently requires no buffer at all on intermittent streams, and they're often removed altogether. It'd be great to see as much of that intermittent stream on that on the western side preserved, even if it has to be highly engineered. At UVA, the South Lawn Project has a great example of how an intermittent stream has been preserved and engineered to actually provide filtering capacity. And and so I'd encourage looking at something there as opposed to just running it as a culvert under a building as it as it's shown on the plan. So I don't know if you have any any thoughts on what could be done there in terms of keeping that stream on the surface or other ways of better managing stormwater on the site in a more quality way that provides quality, not just quantity treatment?
I'm very familiar with that project at the university because I lived on Lewis Mountain Road for a number of years. And that that stream was actually covered for over a hundred years, and they did a great, a great thing. I agree in uncovering that stream. I don't know, Scott, do you have anything you want to?
Add this our engineer, Scott Collins.
Sure, Scott Collins, Collins Engineering. The main thing with that one intermittent stream you're talking about, we've preserved, obviously, all the all the perennial streams on the on the project, it's ever six twenty six hundred linear feet, except for the couple two the two stream crossings. But don't keep in mind, you know, that one intermittent stream that's being impacted from the entrance road sort of north northwest to Um, north, northwest to the buffer area. Probably seventy five percent of that stream that we show being impacted, it's gonna be impacted from the road crossing itself. Not so much the building that's. So really, when you get down to it, it's probably about seven, about fifty, sixty linear feet that's being impacted additionally with a building part. And then it'll be, it'll be routed around, um, cause it'll be obviously picked up with the culvert with, with that road crossing anyways. So we didn't see that small impact of that building as, as, um. A huge impact for the amount of stream crossings, amount of streams that we are preserving on the site, which is also another about. Eight hundred, nine hundred linear feet of, um, intermittent streams. So whole lot of streams on the site and we're preserving eighty, eighty-five percent of it.
Uh, are there any other, um, ways of providing, um, quality in terms of, um, stormwater mitigation? Um, that you would highlight that you're thinking about committing to or that you're, that you're. That you're, you're serious about providing in, in here?
Absolutely. Um, so this size project, the state mandate requires seventy five percent onsite treatment. And this project will actually provide more than that. So this is not one of the typical projects. You'll just go out and purchase nutrient, nutrient credits and sort of move on. Um, the biggest part about this project is that existing V dot, um, sediment basin, which, uh, stormwater management facility. Much like, um, the Brook Hill base, much like the Brook Hill Development, there was an exact similar basin on that. Property as well that beat up built with twenty nine improvements. We took that basin. Enhanced it, improved it and put some stormwater management from the development, from Brook Hill Development into that and made that. Uh, facility much more inviting as far as, um, much more of a, of a, of a natural feature and landscaping feature and. Um, fitted, kind of blended it into the development much instead of just having a chain link fence around it and calling it good. That's the same plan for this one as well. We look to enhance that facility, that existing facility. Put most of our store, a lot more of our stormwater management to it and kind of enhance that area with landscaping and plantings and. And, um, filtration. So that, that's kind of like, you know, taking that facility and you really utilizing that. That's. A lot of the, a lot of what we're doing as far as someone to management from everything that's sort of on that side of the streams. And then we have other facilities on the two, um, two other pods that are bifurcated by streams.
Yeah, I think, I think enhancing the V dot facility and making it into a true biofilter would, would be a real asset. Um, I think if there's some way to, to actually direct that intermittent stream into the biofilter, that would be, um. That'd be a, a great thing to do there. Um, so.
That's a good point, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chair, before we move on for a second, so are we talking about the, the existing biofilter that's right next to the blue and orange house on twenty nine?
Yes.
Existing, this sort of large sort of stone, big stones and a fence around it. And I think there's a hump that's a received water. So you're talking about redoing that. And, and then integrating that into the property.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
That's correct, yeah.
Great, Commissioner Moore?
Uh, I wanted to ask just about the, the, the density of, of units here, the number of units here, um. Uh, just why the sort of, uh, uh, request for four hundred and ten units today? It was five hundred, you know, a few months ago. I think the, uh, PRD could allow up to seven hundred or so, just sort of where you, how you arrived at that figure and, and why we're looking at this density.
Okay, um, it seems to be that four hundred and ten is what works with this development, with the. Improve, with existing infrastructure around development and with the, the streams onsite. You take all those together and kind of factor everything in, it'd be kind of, kind, it kind of cre- creates that number itself. And that number, it works really well with the existing traffic patterns. It works well with. Like I said, like maintaining the streams and looking at the development areas, what's kind of left and. With getting everything else to work out and having recreational spaces and what have you, um, that's where that number kind of evolves from.
Yeah. It's a more challenging site than, than some we've seen, for sure.
Yes, it is.
Uh, I wanted to ask also about the, um, uh, the, the sort of what are called, I think, emergency exits up by Derby Lane and South Hollywood Drive there. Uh, tell me more about those emergency access roads that, that connect to the north. What do those look like? What makes them just for emergency? What are we, what are we talking about?
So, um, what is, what'll be, it'll be like basically like a multi-use pathway. It'll be twenty feet wide for emergency vehicular. Uh, um, connection when needed and those both, on both sides of that roadway, you'll have some bollards. That will be accessible to be opened up by emergency vehicle if some of the main entrances are blocked. Uh, that's the one with, on Derby Lane.
Right.
And it's, yeah, the same one is up there at Ribbon as well. It's our connection up. Now there is a existing driveway along Ribbon Lane that was, well. That will be, that will maintain access to those existing properties just the north of us.
You were pointing like it's.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I need to say, Chair, that the supervisors have been very clear. I assume that Derby Lane is a public road. And I assume that South Hollywood Drive is a public road. I can't tell you how I am, I continue to just be frustrated. By community saying, we don't want any drive-through, but we want V dot to maintain the roads. I mean, that makes, I, I just, I just need to consistently say that. That this is not an acceptable thing for a developer who is putting in a reasonable development into an area. To be hoodwink and, 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 and sort of beat up by a group of people who don't want anybody to use their public road. They should either create it as a private road and then do whatever the heck they want to do with it. But as, as long as my taxpayer and everybody in this room's taxpayer, monies are paying for this, I think you should have free access to them. So as far as the bollards are concerned, I, I can't support that and I won't support that.
Yeah.
Put a private road in if you want to, not you.
But I mean, uh, uh, Commissioner Vivens, uh, uh, takes some of the words out of my mouth and, and does it in his own flair, um. But I, I very much actually support grids and lots of roads that connect to one another so that, that. It's not all funneling onto twenty nine. We actually have alternate pathways for cars to get places. Um, and so I, I, you know, I recognize that for the folks on Derby Lane, six, ten, twelve more cars a day might be a bit of a pain in the neck, but. You know, come on. Um, uh, so you know, I, I, I sort of would rather see like real roads there personally, um, but yeah. Um. And then just to, to clarify, I think, so this is one of these developments that'll be rental units predominantly.
Yes.
Yeah, proposed, yeah. Um, is there any interest in increasing the units, the affordable units up to twenty percent with the new developer incentives?
That's outside my.
You know, when, when the client, you know, developed the plan for this site, I think you heard how we arrived at, yeah, at this plan. Um, you know, those incentives were not.
They weren't there yet.
Um. You, you know, and it, it remains to be seen what will result from those incentives. The county still has to adopt a, a, an ordinance. Um, but it's, you know, it's certainly in the right direction for promoting affordable housing. But for this, it, it might be a different developer that has to do that.
Yeah.
I had to ask.
No, of course. Uh, anyway, I also applaud, uh, uh, lots of, of paths and pedestrian and sidewalks and things that seem to be. Connecting to, to other areas in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes, thanks. I just had a comment and then a question. Um, so my comment, uh, two, actually two quick comments. Um, one is I really like the connectivity that's been maintained through the site. Um, the other comment is about impacts to streams. It's, it's always true pretty much. When you put a box. Any part of a stream in a box culvert, it's going to impact the stream. It'd be nicer to have a bridge, but I totally understand that costs a lot more. My question is, uh, Mr. Blaine, you said at the very end of your presentation, you started, um, talking about environmental. Um, certifications and, and the, a new method you're following that pays more attention to the land and not just the building. You referenced comparisons to lead and other systems. Could you say a little bit more about that? I, I wasn't clear if you were saying that. This development is going to adhere to a set of environmental tenants or you are seeking some sort of certification for this development.
Developer intends to seek a certification for this development to at least reach what's the bronze level for the. Uh, national green building. I can't, um, I couldn't tell you all the factors they consider. But the general areas that they consider in making that certification were what I laid out in the presentation, perhaps, um. Mike Campbell could elaborate on that, but they've done this in other projects and it's been very well received, both from the investor. Side as well as the community and residents.
Yes, I mean, you didn't proffer it, so I guess I'm just curious, could, could he say a little bit more about what, what's intended, not? Not trying to get an exhaustive list here, but just to get a sense of what, what's so green about this one, I'd love to hear.
Um. Michael Campbell with Dominion Relief Partners, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Um, great question. As a company.
You took, you speak into the mic, yeah.
Yeah, there.
As a company, we decided probably ten or twelve years ago for all of our developments to have a green designation. Um, and over that time period, we've done over thirty five green developments that range from office buildings and different levels of lead certification. Uh, residential green globes on a rehabilitation, uh, that we had done. But we found that the, 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 uh. Certification of the National Association of Home Builders, specifically that brand designation worked really well with this type of product. And if you're, your, it sounds like you're familiar with designations and the scorecards associated with each. And essentially this one has a similar scorecard where you go through, I mean, during construction, there's, they're inspecting insulation. They're looking at. You know, SEER ratings on your mechanical units and you establish certain scorecard to achieve that bronze certification. We've done over thirty five over that period of time of green, does, of, of green projects designated at some capacity, some level or another. Um, but this one in particular, we feel fits really well with the, the garden style walk-up product. And, uh, really sticks to our kind of corporate motto about being in green and doing, trying to do what's right for the environment in the. In the certain, in, in all of our projects, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, the beauty of going last, all my questions have been answered and asked, so that's good. Um, so with that, I will call for any comments from the public this evening on this item. They sign up? Anybody online?
Nope.
All right, great. Well, I'm not gonna offer the opportunity for the applicant to respond to any public comment because there was none. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comment. And this time I will start in reverse order. Ms. Firehawk, would you like to provide any comment?
Um, no, not really. Just, again, I actually did appreciate how they maintained connectivity through the site. I thought it was a relatively light footprint. While adding the density that we very much need in the growth area.
Good summary, thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, echo Commissioner Firehawk. Um, I also mentioned earlier, you know, I, I would love to have roads that are actually roads and not bollards at the top. Or at the north rather, but otherwise, uh, I think it's, it's nice, solid, looks like some good, um, housing for people to, to. Add to our stock in this community.
Great, Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, once again, I, I appreciate the efforts to keep density in the growth area and, um, and what's also the interconnectivity. I thought that was a really asset and also the generous amount of green space on the site. Uh, and willingness to consider providing some, some value in terms of stormwater mitigation and, and not just putting everything in a big muddy pit.
Great, Commissioner Cleaver?
Sure, just a ditto to what my, my fellow commissioners are saying. I think it's a, a nice project. I'm glad to see the density increasing. We're, we're, we're developing our parcels more in line with, with the comprehensive plan and suggesting. So I really applaud that and, uh, I've already shared my comments, uh, regarding, uh, the proposal earlier. So I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Garzana? Great, and Commissioner Vivens?
Thank you, Chair. I would just a- also sort of try and give a lift to my colleague to the right about putting in a space in that can actually be a, a larger space. For recreation to take place as opposed to these pocket, uh, these pocket hanky places. And so if you could do that, I think that would be helpful for the community as you build it out. I would also say as I continue, I will continue to say this, I think that in a place like that, that you could have some taller buildings. Not all of them don't need to be taller, but I still think you could put some height on a couple of those buildings there, not with the ones that would cause you to have elevated. Well, you're gonna have to have elevators and some anyhow, because I think this, this will help to promote, that's a wonderful site to promote the idea. That density is not the devil. That in fact you can create a nice space that has some density to it, that can sit nicely, can sit, can sit among. Trees and, and hillsides and, and green spaces and still be a place for people to live with honor and with, with comfort, so.
I didn't have anything to add until.
Well, I said what I said.
Yes.
Of course.
And, and actually, I, I think it's, it's a, a comment to, to our. The staff as well and when we're reviewing these applications, so these opportunities for density, something that comes up often. And, and I'm not sure how much from your standpoint in the staff. Can you encourage potentially asking for exceptions to go beyond the four? I know we have a, 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 a four-story. But so, there's certainly some developments like this one where we don't have impacts to roads, which doesn't always happen as we know. And if we could potentially increase, uh, some development, not only that we get more affordable housing, but we get more housing, period. And there are places that, that can tolerate that additional density. So the density is not the devil, but it doesn't fit everywhere. This is one place that it does fit. And so just wish we could find a way of encouraging that more. Uh, perhaps as we have dialogues because it started out, it, it sounds like they started out as a. More dense community, or at least they were trying to use more of the land that is very restrictive and is cha- challenging site. So the amount of, 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 uh, units got reduced. Well, certainly with more height, you can get more units. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out for staff. I don't, you know, internally, you guys can talk about that and. And how you can potentially incite that you feel are appropriate for more density. Encourage that or, or find ways that we might be able to maximize, because we know that we leave a lot of density on the table. So, and, as, as we looked at our numbers, so.
And if I could come along, Chair, it seems like this is a situation where. La- allowing the applicant to look at sort of gross density instead of what we used to do, or maybe we stopped, sort of we quietly stopped doing it. To say, here's your net density, let them, they are the people paying the expensive staff and the expensive consultants, let them come up with how to use the property. And I think that's beneficial for them and I think it's beneficial for our, for, for our community. Let them be creative. Let them go out and do some things that'll make this the beautiful place we, um, aspire to.
I'll say. Great, I just have a, a couple of comments. Uh, most of them are specific to this application, but others are more, I guess editorial. One is. Density, yes, uh, right location, creative approach to, uh, designing the. Infrastructure and the, the network, well, the street network and also the, uh, the density of the buildings. Um, the residences. Second is, uh, the streets. I agree with Commissioner Vivens. I think it's. When you have a public road that ends in a cul-de-sac and you know, the, the opportunity is there to interconnect to your adjacent property. It seems illogical to me for that to be something that is accessible to the developer. Um, I think it helps with. You know, uh, absorption, trip absorption internally. Uh, there aren't mixed use. This is, there's no commercial here, so there's probably not a lot of trip absorption, but something like that would help provide the dispersment of that. The grid, as you mentioned. Um, so I think that's an area to look at. I also think from a coordination standpoint, I know that the applicant will do this during the process. Knowing if there's a site plan available for, uh, Archer North, um, you know. Knowing that that's gonna interconnect well with your street and align well and not impact your development density and making sure that. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, is something you guys do all the time. I think the interaction with the natural areas is, is wonderful. Um, and I think to be able to leverage that is, is really helpful. I would also, um, just mention for what it's worth, the application for the special exception, and I know we're not making a, um. A motion on that, uh, but it does not mention just the two buildings. I don't believe it does talk about all of the buildings. As, uh, which is different than I think what the applicant said for what's, for what that's worth. Um, and I think with that, those are all of my comments. So if there is no more discussion, is there a motion available?
I'm happy to make a motion. I'm happy to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ZMA twenty twenty-three zero 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 twelve Holly Hills for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Carizana?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks everyone. All right, we will move on to our second public hearing and before we move into ZMA twenty twenty-three sixteen and ZMA twenty twenty-three nineteen, I would ask if the commission would be open to combining these into one public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay, seeing everybody with the thumbs up, we shall do so, and with that, I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening, thanks for your patience as we switch staff, I'm Rebecca Ragstale, Planning Manager with the Planning Division, and I'm joined by Margaret Malashevsky, also a Planning Manager. And we have both worked on this, as you mentioned, it's two items, happy to combine the public hearing. It's one presentation, we're going to cover both and then we have separate actions for you at the end. It is associated with Stonefield and it, Stonefield is its own neighborhood model, so it has a code of development which lists the permitted uses, also has an application plan and proffers, but this rezoning is just for the code of development to amend the use table, to carve out or add to the use table motor vehicle sales of up to four thousand five hundred square feet in certain blocks. Anything beyond that would still be by special use permit, right now that use is by special use permit, so there would be sort of two tiers with this amendment. Related to the request is a special use permit, because there is outdoor storage or outdoor sales display vehicles proposed, that's limited to about ten parking spaces, but the property is on the entrance corridor, so that's why the special use permit is necessary. The property I think everyone's familiar with is at the corner of Seminole Trail twenty-nine and Hydraulic. And this map here, let me get my pointer, shows you the two areas where the use is proposed, nineteen fifty-one being where the showroom is proposed, the old Pier One space there in Stonefield, some spaces adjacent to that and then some other spaces adjacent to the Regal Movie Theater in nineteen fifty-four. The comprehensive plan designates this as urban mixed use, autos, auto, auto uses are contemplated. Sorry, not sure what that is, automobile automobile service and sales is contemplated as I would consider a secondary use and what's proposed is certainly minimal and limited and well within the guidelines of the master plan, so we didn't have any concerns there. And we went over the location of the proposal, it has been reviewed by the Architectural Review Board who recommended approval. This is just a closer look of the spaces that would be by the Regal Theater. And then also the spaces that are proposed adjacent to where the potential showroom would be and sales office. And another, this is actually the theater. The existing landscaping does a good job of screening the parking lot and these vehicles aren't expected to have any negative impacts, they're cars parked in existing parking spaces, so there wasn't any additional landscaping that was recommended. We mentioned the consistency with the master plan guidelines, we don't think given the size and scale and nature of the proposal that it's in conflict with the original intent of the Stonefield Coda Development. So we do recommend approval of both of the proposals, the rezoning to amend the code of development and then the special use permit for the outdoor storage and display with the conditions recommended by the Architectural Review Board, which includes the location of the parking spaces, that they be within those existing striped parking spaces and that vehicles not be elevated anywhere on site. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, any questions for staff, I'll start with Commissioner Moore?
I don't. I have questions for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray? Claiborne?
Does this require charging stations on the site or anywhere?
There, I think we anticipate some charging stations in the existing parking spaces that may be used for display.
So there would be some there, just asking, you anticipate some?
We do, and then I'll let the applicant clarify if I'm not correct, but it's very common, we have those throughout the county now.
Sure, 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 and last question, I know this went before the ARB, is there any intention of having like building mounted security to watch the cars, right, or anything like that? Not sure if that was a conversation to ARB, it just, those are very valuable assets out there, so.
I will let the applicant address that, but I don't think that was discussed at the ARB.
Commissioner Carizana? Commissioner Bivens?
Thanks Chair, so could, I didn't understand, or I didn't, I couldn't identify what was, what are blocks A, B, C, D, and G off the plan, so that went, so the, ah, where is that in my package? That wasn't in my package.
I apologize, I thought it was, so this is the, from the code of development and with neighborhood models, uses are established by blocks, so A is where Trader, well, I say anchor by the Trader Joe's.
That's fine, Trader Joe's is fine.
And so A is where nineteen, one of the, one of the buildings is and then C is where the movie theater is.
Okay, okay.
And then, so it's A, C, and B, commercial blocks, and then over here in G, another commercial block.
Thank you, that's very helpful, and so if this passes, this is not simply for one vendor. So while we may have the vendor that's, everyone knows that I'm not allowed to talk about, but we have the vendor that's over here that's coming here, would we be able to have another vendor who wanted to come in and have sales too under this and not have to go through the special use permit?
Yes, so the rezoning is to allow that flexibility.
So we'd have, and 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 would we then allow staff to be able to say, no elevated, no, no vehicle elevation as opposed to having to go through the ARB?
So the the flexibility is for the use, the underlying use for the motor vehicle sales. If there is a proposal where no vehicles are visible from the entrance corridor, then, you know, they may not need to go back to the ARB, go go through that SP process, but the SP is very specific in terms of where the, what vehicles are allowed, ten spaces in the location that we've reviewed. So there is the potential, if something changes with outdoor storage of of vehicles that.
If another, if if another, if another vendor or manufacturer were to come in and want to do direct-to-consumer sales, they'd have to go back to get some allocation of parking, parking spots made available to them. Since this is, since the ten spots here are only for the the expected, the anticipated dealership that's coming or that may come.
So there's those ten spots that are approved, whoever wants to use them.
If I wanted to bring another manufacturer.
Right, so then we would.
They'd have to do the same thing, have some spots allocated to them.
Yes.
Okay, so here's the thing that really sort of troubled me about this, not this project, I I'm fine with this, I don't have any problems with this, is that they had to go to the ARB for six parking spaces. This is my neighborhood, at any time, there could be twenty Teslas over there. And by chance, you could have twenty Teslas parked all in line like little twenty Tesla Indians. So the fact that they had to go to the ARB to get to get permission to park six Teslas together next to the structured parking for the for the for the cinema feels as if we wasted a lot of people's time, I know we have an ARB champion here, that we wasted a lot of people's time and we wasted staff's and we staff's time and we wasted money, when in fact it's a parking lot, which if you come there on any particular eleven o'clock period, I can give you at least fifteen to twenty Teslas that are parked in there right now. So I think as we rethink this, and I'm, so I'm also sort of pushing this for, as we rethink this, this idea of what a sales and services is for the ordinance that we say, there has been a change in the way people are going to sell vehicles. And everything's not going to be like flow up there, up there on 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 two fifty East.
Right.
That there are going to be direct-to-consumer type sales and that that should be no different than LL Bean selling kayaks, you know, which is, which, and and so I'm just hoping that we can have some flexibility when we redo our ordinances for a specific type of vendor. That's not your, sort of the traditional, what we know as a traditional automobile vendor.
Just for the record, I think the ARB did review the kayaks on the LL Bean.
They did.
No.
Yes, they did, that I listed that in history.
Just like we did with the Home Depot.
With the with the roses, with the rose bushes?
Well, the outdoor display.
No, the 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 display, the the outdoor display, it's what's being approved here.
Well, I would hope at some point, Chair, that we can have a conversation so the ARB can 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 do things which are not sort of knitting, that's not about sort of knitting and naval gun. That's, I I know Margaret's here, my Margaret's always here, she's gonna keep me straight on this one, it's just, use their time better.
Hello, everyone, nice to see you, Margaret Malashevsky with the Planning Division, and we all agree with the zoning ordinance changes, we hope to change the requirement for the special use permit for outdoor display to design standards, which would be what you see all the time as the conditions of approval.
And that you can manage it, that you man, yes, I trust, she can manage it.
Yeah.
We don't have that many outdoor displays, so why don't they do something about all those holiday displays that are all kind of funky to a hot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else was I gonna ask you about? We're gonna say something about that, you told me we could have another place come in, that's good, I'm happy about that. Because what I was gonna say, all of us are probably quite aware of the Frank Lloyd Wright on Park Avenue and Fifty-third, Fifty-sixth Street, that was where Mercedes and Porsche had their building, it was absolutely a brilliant internal showroom. Okay, while this is not going to be that, this is taking over the pier, half of the Pier Pier One spot, the fact that times change and Albemarle County in its forward-looking self should be able to change too. That's all, that's where I'm coming from, we're not going to be Frank Lloyd Wright for you architects and one of us, but 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 we are, we can be something that's that that gives some freedom for this new way for people to sell to sell vehicles. And and Stonefield is a perfect place for this to happen.
Great, thank you, and Commissioner Firehawk?
No, thank you, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
All right, awesome, thank you all, thank you staff, with that, I'll open the public hearing. The applicant like to present?
Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Steve Blaine, representing Stonefield. The project manager Kendra Walston is here also, I've got a confession, I don't have any unique images because I took Margaret and Rebecca put together excellent slides and I used them at the Community Advisory Committee, I'm not gonna run through those again. The, as you know, the the ZMA is because we're having to amend the code of development. This was back in those halcyon days when we wrote pages and pages of our development code, how naive we were. And I was, or not naive, but we were earnest and I can say, because Frank Cox and I were the authors of the code, the original code, that in thinking of an urban destination, neighborhood model, the notion of a conventional auto dealership never occurred to us. So it was easy to put an S in the box, you know, special use permit. And I think this is an example of what Commissioner Bivens is talking about, the mod, the business model, you know, the Tesla business model is not to have a lot, you know, all your models out on the on the on the on the floor. And in a way, it's what you're saying, it's it's a hearken back, because I grew up in Chicago, I remember Michigan Avenue, the Mercedes and the Cadillac dealerships had a beautiful display in the office building lobby. So we've come full circle and agree with the comments about the need for the ARB. Tesla came in originally with this application, they heard about the process and they walked away. But fortunately, Stonefield, the O'Connor Group, they saw that there was going to be value added to this and they brought them back to the fold, but they had to bring the application through. So we recognize and agree with your position on that. So we kept Tesla in the county, they didn't go in the city, but yeah, that's an example where it can make a difference. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, any questions for the applicant?
Someone asked about chargers and at the location, I think it was chargers, Commissioner Coling, where you asked whether or not at those particular area.
There will be additional chargers for the display models, there are existing six or eight Tesla chargers there already, so, yeah.
There's a whole bank of them, I think it's like eight of them.
Oh, okay.
Over by the hotel, right?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Firehawk, just checking, no questions? All right, great, are there any members of the public would like to speak to this?
Yep.
No, no one online, nobody on a little sheet of paper somewhere, all right.
Oh, there's somebody coming, quick.
Yeah, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Why don't I start back with Commissioner Moore?
I'll figure out another place to park when I visit the coffee shop.
Okay.
Y'all heard from me on this one already, I I I I actually do think, there's a couple of things here. If we are trying to create economic opportunities for shopping location, for commercial opportunity, for commercial locations, then we need to be flexible in what we consider commercial. And that's something that I think is going to have to flex over the next coming few years. But the way people purchase things, the way people spend time, if we could create sort of enough synergy and energy at Stonefield, this is a little bit, little bit of a private want, we might be able to get a larger, good restaurant back there, which would be good for all of us, if we can get the income strata there and, you know, no offense about the the upcoming, in the upcoming vehicle, but if we can get some other things like there, then that is a commitment that I think will have a way of moving out to our other shopping centers. So I am even in all my snarkiness, I'm really, really good with this, I'm really, really good with this, Chair.
Great, thank you, and Commissioner Firehawk, any last comments, snarky or otherwise?
Yes, I mean, I support this development, I would, this SEP, I would, I was listening to it, I was hearkening back to when I bought my very first car, and I actually bought it in Bethesda, little Chevy Nova, and it, it was in an office building and it, the cars went up and down in an elevator, it was a vertical showroom. And yeah, you it didn't take up any space and I I think that hardly, and I think that I'd love to see that be the future because I I always think about how the auto dealerships at Pantops have the best views and yet, you know, they're not being appreciated because they're just a bunch of dead cars sitting out there. So I I'd like to see more of this small-scale, retail-scale auto sales and I'm sure it will be quite tasteful, so I have no concerns.
Great, thank you, so thank you to staff, I think we have two votes, two approvals that we need to make. The first one is ZMA twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved as 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 stated in the staff report.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I I would just only ask, Chair, that when this package goes to our supervisors, that the A, B, and C, that that go in there, that that be included.
Great, so noted, thank you, Madam Clerk, could we have the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Carizana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, and now we will need a motion on SP twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, Stonefield Outdoor Display Storage. I have a motion.
I move that Chair as, as stated in the staff report.
I, I'm sorry, was that a motion to recommend approval?
At what? Yes.
And do we have? Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, give us a roll.
Okay, Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Karazan?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. Have a great evening. Uh, we will now move on to committee reports. Are there any updates from the commissioners on any committees?
I do. Chair, we had a CAC budget meeting, we had a CAC meeting last night, which was this sort of budget transportation projects updated and school, um, school board update. That is actually, I will say for one of those over the years that I've been involved with sort of a budget updating uh, meeting, there were close, there were over thirty-five individuals from the, from the community who were there. So I think having that kind of threesome or three-pointed meeting or presentation was A, quite helpful. And I think people, you know, people sort of came away feeling as if they had been properly informed. So I, I will say that. I think it was a success.
Great, had the same experience by the way with Fifth and Avon. Yeah, but it was pretty well attended. Yeah, great. Commissioner Moore, did you have a report?
I do. The Rio Places twenty-nine Community Advisors, Community Advisory Committee met. There's a proposal for an expansion of Our Lady of Peace Senior Living Facility to add a wing with several dozen memory care and nursing care, private rooms to that facility. We'll get that at some point. Not a lot of objection or anything. A little bit of concern about stormwater runoff into the pond that kind of runs behind Branchlands Drive and and, and this is something that Commissioner Supervisor Galloway has been concerned about in general for that whole area. We're getting a lot of runoff and, and sort of like sort of flooding events. Sort of behind Woodbrook, behind Branchlands, that whole zone, as more things get built and more water comes down our way.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? No, great.
So if I could just sort of give Commissioner Moore a piece of information, he may have it, but just so that the public's aware is that the county has engaged with someone to look at the intersection there and sort of, oh gosh, I hate this. I don't know, I, I never know, where the old senior center used to be.
The Hillsdale and Greenberg?
Thank you. There's a, there's been.
No, it's not. It's actually a road project. There is a, uh, a facilities environmental services is looking at the stormwater management in that area.
Yeah.
To try and address that.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned that, that that is something that staff time has been dedicated to now and Ned is sort of helping to work with and be a conduit with homeowners.
Great, all right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the Board of Supervisors report from April third.
Uh, yes, Board of Supervisors met on April third. The two public hearings that came before them were the Service Dogs of Virginia. And that went through without any issues. They did make some, some minor changes to the, uh, to the the, the design plan for that to address some of the comments that they heard. Uh, that, and then that passed unanimously. And also the Kenridge landscaping issue, the, the rezoning or to amend the zoning code for that also went before the board once again passed unanimously. And there were some additional minor changes to the, the proffers on that one as well. So those things went through. The only other items that went through on the day session, there was a work session on the secondary six-year plan or our paving program to start talking to the board about some of the roads that have been requested for paving. And we will be going back to the board with a final list of those projects in next month in May. And then they also did a work session on the AC forty-four Community Facilities Goals and Objectives. So had a healthy discussion on that, on that item, similar to what you all heard previously. So those were the items, the board.
Thank you, Kevin. I, I listened to, to that meeting and about the secondary six-year improvements and it was interesting to hear some of the comments that, that the supervisors suggested that maybe we should be looking at the pedestrian usage of those roads and also the development impact of them. Is that something you, you see that, that might happen this year in terms of including that kind of information in the staff report?
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that. I think that if any, if any road came up with a request for paving that we, because and we do, as staff, we do always check on, through the same sources that you've mentioned before on whether or not this is a road that's heavily used for recreation, hiking or biking. So when those things do come up, we would, we would be able to bring that up. We're happy to do that. We're hoping that we can address that a little more clearly in the update to the comprehensive plan to identify some of these roads that are heavily used like that. As far as development, these roads are generally in the rural area where we're not seeing any additional chances of development. So if there were something that we might be aware of going on, then I think that would be something that would be pointed out in the staff report, yes.
Well, a lot of times the only thing that keeps all these developments, these areas from being development is the fact that they are gravel. No one's going to put a subdivision on, you know, an area if the only way to reach it is a gravel road. And I think actually one of the things Riz has called out, Fox Mountain Road is a perfect example of that because already since it's been put on the paving list, there's a bunch of for sale signs that have gone up on Fox Mountain. And so if, you know, the, I can just see if that road gets, gets paved, that instantly, instantly it's going to be a bunch of for sale signs with, you know, like mountain views. And so I think, you know, it, it's something, the, the, the development impact of, of looking at what, what will happen when you pave a road like that and that kind of analysis, I think is important. Now, if it's all under conservation use minute, all the way along the road, then you can say, well, there is no development impact. But if, if there's tons of development rights along the length of that and, and it's mostly undeveloped, then, then I think it's something that should be brought as, as part of the staff report and something that should be looked at. Cause then it becomes a de facto upzoning.
What, which road was this again, please?
Um, Fox Mountain.
Fox Mountain.
Um, you know, I just bring that as one example, but I think it's the kind of thing we should be looking at with all these roads in terms of, I mean, the rural rustic paving proclamation says in it specifically, whereas we know of no development that will cause increased traffic on that. And I think if we want to really make that, take that statement seriously before the board supervisor signs it, then we should actually do that analysis and we have the data to do that, so.
Great, thank you. AC forty-four update.
Uh, yeah, not, not much to say on this one. We did, uh, we, as I mentioned, we did go to the board with the community facilities. That was the last I, time we are going to go to the board with the, uh, goals and objectives. What we're working on right now is developing the action steps. We are still working out a schedule for how to kind of finalize that and be bringing that back to the planning commission and the board as well as prioritizing those action steps. Developing our big moves, which are, you know, the, the major, the high priority projects that we expect to pull out of that. And then writing the document that's going to be going on over this summer and fall. And, but right now we have no upcoming meetings scheduled as we're kind of preparing for this next phase to get going.
So related to that, I think you just answered my question, but in terms of, for example, our next meeting in April, on April twenty-third, when can we expect work sessions on AC forty-four to start cranking back up again?
I'm, I'm going to have to get back to you on that because we are kind of in flux trying to develop that. But I don't expect any in the next month. So I think that we've got at least the next two planning commission meetings will be open without any AC forty-four work sessions. And then I'm sorry, we, we are actually changing our schedule right now. So sorry, I didn't, didn't get, we haven't really taken this all the way around, but there were some concerns that we needed to kind of rethink some of the scheduling for that recently. So we will be back with you to let you know the full schedule. I, I do expect work sessions to happen. I just think they're going to happen more into the summertime as opposed to the rest of the spring.
Awesome. And then as a reminder to everyone, because it will probably be a heavy summer, if you're planning on taking vacation, cancel your plans.
Cancel our plans.
Do that. No, but just let, let staff know if you're planning to be out because it's going to be a busy summer.
I'll also update the invites that I updated today. To go back to what they were, but I'll do that tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any new business?
If I could ask something to you and to staff. So many of us received something from the TJPDC on a regional economic development plan. And it would be really helpful, I think, for us to be able to hear something about that regional economic plan. Since I would imagine that a number of the items that will occur there will have an impact on our community. And so I think as we're moving towards this process, that it would be helpful to know more about the T, TJPDC Regional Economic Development Plan.
Great, good idea.
I, I will reach out to them and see if we can get some more information or have them here for a, a brief presentation on that. Thank you.
Awesome. Any old business? Any items for follow-up? All right, well, with that, unless there is other discussion, I will adjourn this meeting until Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Thank you, everybody.